Well, good evening. I'd like to call the -- order the meeting of the Cunningham Township Board. It's Tuesday, September 3rd, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustees Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Hersi.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Woo.
Here.
Chair Marlin.
Here.
And let the record show that Councilmember Jacobson is attending electronically. Next up is minutes from the previous meeting. Actually, Town Board member Jacobson is attending electronically. Minutes from the previous meeting of August 5th. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
Moved by Mary Alice, seconded by Bill. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Alright, next up is committee to verify bills.
So, this past month for the total, the town fund, we had $46,239.28. For the general assistance fund, we had $52,303.31. And the total between the two funds was eighty, excuse me, $98,539.31. Happy to answer any questions.
Sharice.
Um, I'm still not, like, real, um, well-versed on how the bills go. I did want a definition of interim.
Interim.
On page four. I noticed a lot-
Oh, interim, GHX, are you referring to the personal allowances?
Uh-huh.
Yeah. So, what we do, it's essentially, the date that our participants have all of their paperwork in to receive general assistance, is the date that we consider them approved, if they're approved, you know, usually it takes another week to, like, nine or 10 days to go through an approval process. So, we essentially start from the date that they're all in. And they receive, except if that date is the first of the month, there's almost always an interim check. So, the interim check is either a portion of a month, or it might be a full month plus a small portion from the month before. So, it's essentially what you'll see with those interim checks is, you'll see, you know, up to two months if there were delays in processing the application. And so, I have us list the interim checks, separate from the standard DGA checks. You'll also see 10 percent. 10 percent is when there was an overpayment to that participant. Perhaps they did not declare income and we found that out later, or there was income during that time, they're considered to have an overpayment. And so, we essentially are allowed by our rules to take 10 percent off their checks until that overpayment is paid back. And that's been the standard practice for as long as I know. Both of those practices, the interim checks and the 10 percent overpayment.
Okay.
And one other thing was the, but the office applies. We charge twice the same amount, $156.99 for smart TV.
Oh, this is, I believe- Is this the television for the conference room, smart TV?
Yeah, so we divide it into three different budget.
Oh, yeah, 'cause I was like, it was much more expensive than that. So, essentially, we bought a $500 for our conference room. We bought, oh, excuse me, a $400, not quite $400 television set and cables. Right now, we don't have an overhead projector, we don't have a TV, so we basically created a monitor for our conference room. We had to divide those across both the supervisors and the assessors' line items, so essentially, for accounting purposes, we split it into two, but it's one purchase.
Okay. And that's all I have.
Any other questions?
I'll move approval of the town fund and the general assistance fund.
Second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Sharice. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Reports of officers.
My report is just very brief. Our general assistance participants are up to 118. That's up from 104 last month. We've had a pretty, and I've only been in the office now, this would be my third August, but it does seem like we have bumps in general assistance participants towards the end of the summer. And we also see them over Christmas holiday. I actually recently pulled the I Plan report, which is a report that is put together by the Public Health District. And at some point, I can share with you this graph, but it essentially shows that although we have low unemployment in our community, each summer, the unemployment spikes. So, we actually, if you look at the nation, it goes like this, you know? But if you look at us, our unemployment goes like this. So, on average, we actually have pretty low unemployment rate, but we do see that people struggle in the summer. And we see that with our rental assistance and our general assistance. We currently have 25 for homeless, that's actually down, we had a number of case closures. So, the 118 actually represents quite a few additions and then a number of case closures. Rental assistance were down, we had 14 last month, which is relatively high to about 10, which is what I would expect. Five of those were move-ins for the homeless and five for eviction prevention. I just had a couple of highlights. All our staff are now deputy registrars. We do nonpartisan registration of citizens to vote in our office anytime during our office hours, and any person in our office can fulfill that duty. This means that the first time folks vote, they don't have to bring their ID. I would encourage other governmental entities to do that as well, because we're going into an election season. We are partnering with the U of I Community Data Clinic on a different NSF grant. I mentioned the other one that had to do with three data scientists, this is different. We are looking to design and improve the accessibility and accuracy of social service provision using a smart cities technology that's actually developed here at the U of I. In six months or so, we'll find out if we, if our PR partner, Dr. Anita Chan, has received that grant, and if so, we'll be partnering with the community to create real-time data provision of social services, which is very exciting. Our garden is at a bumper crop of tomatoes, please come by and pick, if you're listening. We're at 205 West Green Street, you can just come pick tomatoes, we need to move them. We had 35 staff, interns, volunteers, and participants, along with friends, march with us in the Labor Day Parade. I will bring you stickers, I left them at home. We have these beautiful Cunningham Township's care stickers to raise awareness about our programs. We're trying to make sure that we're not just reaching those who are networked and already know about our programs, but really everyone in the community, especially those who may be more disconnected. So, we're doing some outreach efforts, we'll be at the Pride Parade, and we are at CU Days. So, we're trying to really be visible in the community. And I think that's it with my, I think my report is over, and then I know Wayne had a report.
Thank you. Wayne Williams, township assessor.
So, I have a report. First, I want to apologize for not being able to make the last couple of meetings. We were gone for training. However, this report ended up being a lot longer than I think anyone here would like, so I'm gonna try to go through it really fast, and I gave the slides to everyone, so if you have questions, if you could just hold them until the end, and I'll take them.
And feel free to summarize anything.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, assessing has its own language, and as the township assessor, it's my, part of my duty to translate that language and explain how the terms are used. Terms like COD, PRD, median. These are statistical terms, very boring, but we use it every day, so I think it's important for the public to know what some of these terms mean. So, the way that we get to some of the terms is we conduct sales ratio studies. At the very basic level, what a sales ratio study does is take our assessed value, look at what a property sold for, and we get a number. We're looking for the number to be 33 and a third percent as often as possible. So, if you have a house that sold for $100,000, we want our assessment to be $33,300. That would be a 33 and a third percent ratio. If it's sold for $50,000, I'm sorry, if it's sold for $100,000, we assess it for $50,000, that would be a 50 percent ratio, which is obviously too high. If we have it assessed for $20,000, that'd be a 20 percent ratio, which is obviously too low. This is a word that we've seen time and time again, coefficiental dispersion. What you need to know about the coefficiental dispersion is that you want it to be below 15, right? Below, what coefficiental dispersion is, is measure how accurate our assessments are. When it's below 15, that means that the assessments are within 15 percent higher low of what homes are selling for. So, this is meant because we're gonna be looking at charts and graphs now, and I know how much fun those are. So, this information comes from the Department of Revenue, and that solid line is at 15 percent for the, where we want the coefficient of dispersion to be. And this shows what the coefficient of dispersion has been from 2008 up until 2017, and that's the latest year the Department of Revenue has data for. We went further and actually looked at how the COD, what it was doing by neighborhood, and we have the data for 2017 and 2018. And what we did was, we looked at the racial composition of each neighborhood, and what we did was, we ranked the neighborhoods and looked at their COD. And what we saw is, so neighborhoods below eight, and remember with COD, lower is better. When we looked at the neighborhoods with CODs below eight, we found that they were 67 percent white, 33 percent non-white. Those with normal CODs, 15 or below, we saw that they were 67 percent white, 33 percent non-white, above 15 percent, 54 percent white, and 46 percent non-white. And 25 and above, which is really egregious when it comes to the COD number, 52 percent white, 47 percent non-white. And Alan Axelrod, who does statistics stuff, helped compile these statistics. I borrowed them from Danielle, so thank you, Danielle. And this is the 2018 data. It kinda shows the same thing, so I'm not gonna repeat, but basically, what we're seeing is, what it shows is, whiter neighborhoods have better assessment results. That's what the data shows. Going forward to PRD, or price-related differential, this measures regressivity or progressivity in assessments. So, what a regressive assessment means is that lower-priced properties are assessed higher than what they should be, higher-priced properties are assessed lower than what they should be. What a progressive assessment, what progressivity means is, lower-priced properties are assessed lower than where they should be, and higher-priced properties are assessed higher than where they should be. The PRD number, what we're looking for, is for a range between .98 and 1.03. And again, we looked at, from 2008 to 2017, the yellow in the box shows that range of .98 to 1.03. And as you can see, we've been out of range for the PRD number for some time. We also compiled the racial statistics of the neighborhoods, we ranked them, compiled the racial statistics, and it really shows the same thing that the coefficient of dispersion statistics show. So, further concerns, and these are really past concerns, which I've discussed with you all before, outdated, underused technology, paper-based records, lack of digital records, quickly query assessments, and inability to produce sales ratio studies. So, what do we do? And this was meant to be cute, but I'll skip through it. We're gonna make assessments great again in Cunningham Township. Because if you saw, if you looked at the charts, you know, the numbers were where they were supposed to be up until about 2010. Something happened in 2010, and they got out of range. So, how do we fix it? I have another acronym, a much better acronym than the last one. We're gonna tear it up. Stands for Technology Education Assessment and Reassessment. So, for technology, what we've done is, we have a new camera system, we're integrating that, we've digitized our property record cards, all our cards, we have PDF scans of now, and we have a website coming soon. What the website is gonna do is, it's gonna allow for residents to search by address the property record card that we have for a particular property. What that'll in turn do, and this is a preview of the website coming soon, we're still testing it, this will actually, we spend a lot of staff time actually responding to these requests. So, this website is coming soon. With education, you know, education is important to fix the disparities that I previously identified in our assessments. So, it's important to keep current, on changes in assessment laws, stay proficient in current valuation techniques, and learn the best ways to value property. So, and what do we learn? One thing that I asked everyone in my staff to do was, give me three takeaways that they took from every class. And I'm not gonna go through every class in the interest of time. I will tell you this, there is a debate, after I saw the product of what my staff did, on whether I said three takeaways or at least three takeaways. So, some of the slides are pretty like this. So, the ethics course was the IPA course, Intro to Assessments, Property Valuation, the Basics of Mass Appraisal. And then parentheses, we have the institution that provides the course. It's either the IPA, Illinois Property Assessment Institute, or the IWAO, International Assessment, IWAO, International Assessment Administration Officers Organization. Preferential Assessments, this is one that I took, and, 'cause I know I told them three, so I only put three. This was a very valuable course. We learned about various preferential assessments in state law, learned how to do, how to value solar panel installations, and learned how to value Section 42 housing, among other things. Home set exemptions. Our office typically doesn't, we assist with home set exemptions, but that's really a county function. And just learning how to better manage these exemptions is what we got from this one. Neighborhood Analysis Workshop, RETDs from Township to State, Illinois Tax Policy, Real Estate Law, Fundamentals of Rural Property Appraisal. This is a nice illustration from that course. The Income Approach to Value and Income Approach to Value II, and Residential Modeling Concepts. That was the most recent course that I took with one of my other employees, TNA. This was probably on the cutting edge of what assessors are doing. And instead of going from just a cost-based model, we're learning how to go and use a purely sales-based model to determine property assessments. The A and T R is assessment, and this is, this refers to what we're doing for new property, new construction. We're gonna collect the data, we're gonna put it in our camera system. We get permits from the city on a regular basis electronically, but we also get the paper permits as well. We have to keep track of sales, making sure they're valid or invalid. That actually goes back to the sales ratios course that Laura, my staff, took. What we found is that the county wasn't very aggressive in identifying sales that should have been excluded from the study. I'll give an example. If me and Danielle, if we own a house together, and then I decide that, instead of owning this house together with Danielle, I'm just gonna buy this house and own it completely. And we saw a green sheet where we had two people who owned a house together, Seligis is one of the people, and that was included in our sales study, which, and, and it should not have been. So, knowing how to identify that is something that was learned in the sales ratio course, I'm sorry, the RETDs course. And the reassessment, that's what we're doing now. So, assessment review is necessary to maintain accuracy and uniformity in our values. In an ideal world, every property would be assessed at 33 and a third percent. Unfortunately, we don't live in that world, we live in Urbana, which is not ideal, but almost perfect. All properties should be reassessed every four years. However, many properties in our jurisdictions have not been reassessed in over four years. Factoring a property's assessed value to bring it closer to 33 and a third percent does not mean reassessment. I'll give you an example. In 2018, the bulk of the assessment work that my office did was factoring. This year, in 2019, we did a factor, we did a commercial factor, but we also reassessed Neighborhood 21, which is capstone quarters. What I mean by reassessment is, we looked at every unit, every condo unit in capstone quarters, and we placed a brand-new value. So, we valued the four bedrooms at one level, the three bedrooms at another level, and the two bedrooms at another level. That is gonna cause increases from where the assessments were. The average increase is 23 percent, but some people went as high as 77 percent in terms of their increase. That's because that was a neighborhood that had been neglected, and we gave it some TLC. So, I will leave this part for questions. This is a picture of our staff.
Any questions for Wayne? Thank you, Wayne. Thank you.
Oh.
New business? Okay. No further business before the board, then this meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
You've cut your script. Okay. Hmm?
it's being passed, but like, we're in the, yeah, it's, it's the Department of Revenue.
I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a whole word.
But I thought this was, yes, but because it-
I think my camera's stuck.
Yeah, I think that's the thing.
I should've known better.
Okay. Alright, I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Urbana City Council for September 3rd, 2019. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Hersi.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Woo.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
And per council rules, we'll say the Pledge of Allegiance because it follows a national holiday.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from two previous, well, the previous meeting of August 19th and a public hearing on August 12th. Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Moved by Jared.
Yep.
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill. Are there any corrections? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Okay, seeing none. Next up on the agenda is public input. I have cards from two people. First is from Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood. They choose not to address members, but they're continually concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. I also have a card from Eldress Melinda Carr, who expresses continued concerns about Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity, and historic impact. Is there anyone else who wish to address the Urbana City Council? Okay. Under Presentations, I do have one proclamation. And with us tonight is Celeste Shout from the Urbana Free Library.
Actually, why don't you, I don't have a microphone, so why don't you come up here so we catch this on the mic? So, this is a proclamation. Whereas, a library card is the most important school supply of all. And whereas, libraries play an important role in the education and development of children. And whereas, library programs serve students of all ages, from early literacy to homework help to GED classes. And whereas, libraries empower all people to pursue their interests, discover their passions, and achieve their highest potential as learners and citizens. And whereas, library staff bring communities together, creating welcoming and inclusive spaces for students of all backgrounds to learn together. And whereas, libraries are constantly transforming and expanding their services to meet the needs of the communities they serve. And whereas, libraries promote equity, making digital technology and information equally accessible to all. Now, therefore I, Diane Wolf-Marlin, Mayor of the City of Urbana, do hereby proclaim the month of September 29th, 19, as library card signup month in the City of Urbana, Illinois, and encourage everyone to sign up for their own library card at our free and wonderful Urbana Free Library today. Yes.
Thank you very much, Wayne.
And thank you all for your service on the library board.
You're very welcome.
Very welcome.
And as an example of how our library is constantly evolving, they just announced they're going to start a seed lending library. So, there'll be a catalog of seeds that you can check out and plant and grow, and then bring back seeds next year to keep them circulating through the community, which is a wonderful, just a wonderful idea. Unfinished business. I don't believe we have any. Reports of the standing committee, and we'll begin with the consent agenda. Committee Chair Dean Hazen.
Okay, the committee of the whole recommended that the city council take single vote, take a single vote to consider approval of the following items appearing on the consent agenda. Read each of these. I'm kidding, Charlie. Resolution number 2019-08-032R, a resolution to approve an intergovernmental agreement, GIS Consortium Base Station Agreement. Resolution number 2019-08-033R, a resolution approving a City of Urbana Community Development Block Grant Agreement, Habitat for Humanity Project Number 1920-CSSP-01. An ordinance number 2019-08-050, an ordinance authorizing the dedication of Right of Way 301 North Ray Street. And finally, ordinance number 2019-08-051, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Two, Section 2-4, 2-27, and 2-28 Administration.
Does anyone request removing any of these items to the regular agenda? Okay. Does anyone request removing any of these items to the regular agenda? We have no public input cards related to these items.
Okay, so we're going to go on to the regular, oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I skipped a whole step here. I move that the four previously stated items appear in the Consent Agenda for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. So the motion to consider the Consent Agenda was made by Dean, seconded by Jared. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign.
Okay, so the, for the committee, I move passage of the four previously stated items appearing on the Consent Agenda.
Is there a second to that motion?
Seconded by Mary Alice. Motion was made by Dean, seconded by Mary Alice, to pass the items in the Consent Agenda. Are there any questions or discussion?
No further questions or discussion. Will the clerk please, clerk, please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Hersi.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Robert. Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. And thanks to the clerk for guiding us through this process.
Okay, so next up, we're going to do the remainder of the Committee of the Whole, correct?
Correct.
Okay. On behalf of Committee of the Whole, I will move ordinance number 2019-08-047, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code Chapter Twenty-two by adding Article Two, Sections Twenty-two through sixteen through twenty-two through nineteen, municipal cannabis retailers' occupation tax finance.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by second, or moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any discussion or questions? Mary Alice.
I had asked legal this question, so I thought I would just share it with everybody. I was curious if this covered CDB oil. And so I suppose that the state's intention perhaps was not to include this into the sales tax, but it's a little confusing.
Yeah, I was, I'm sorry.
I didn't have time to dig into that because I got that question just a few minutes ago, but from my reading of the definition, I don't believe that that was the state's intent. But for a more definitive answer, I'd need a little bit more time, but I haven't had a chance to read through the entire act.
All two hundred and fifty pages of the act. Okay, thank you. Just so the public knows, we did remove the word recreational from the ordinance as requested by council. Dean.
I've been contacted by quite a few constituents that were concerned that the passing of any tax resolution this evening would be an umbrella and an open, you know, carte blanche to just use cannabis in public, public places like concerts, bars, restaurants, and things like that. And I just wanted to assure everybody publicly that this is only about the tax tonight, and I was hoping that maybe Ms. Mayor, you could speak to when we might address those issues. I assume it's prior to January one.
Absolutely. Yes, what we have before us tonight is simply establishing the three percent tax on the sale of cannabis, and that is because we need to let the state of Illinois know by the end of September whether or not we intend to do that. There are still a lot of other issues that we'll need to address, including zoning for where any other dispensaries could possibly be located, social consumption, that's what your concerns are included in the social consumption of cannabis. That will be subject to local regulation as well. We'll be doing a whole lot of expungements next year as a result of this legislation as well, so there's a financial and workload implication for that as well. So all of those items will be addressed in the coming months.
Thank you, Mayor.
But tonight, we're simply voting on the tax. So we'll take this step by step because frankly, there's, there's still a lot of unknowns out there, and the state's going to be working through these as well. So it'll be a step-by-step process. Any further questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Hersi.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you very much.
Next up would be ordinance number 2019-08-048, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance, Budget Amendment Number One, ambiness, I can never say, and City Finance.
Elizabeth Hannan is available to answer any questions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Bill. Any discussion or questions? Mary Alice.
Thank you. It looks like there are several different groups that provided additional information, so I wanted to thank Public Works and Community Development, those are the two, and the Budget Office, of course. My question was about the Technology Services and Equipment Services Fund. There was a fleet management system for $12,000. I'm wondering if that's a one-time or reoccurring fee.
That $12,000 is a one-time cuss for the implementation of the software.
Okay, all right, thank you.
There, I know there was a question last week about the cost of the improvement of Green Street from Race to the hotel, which included resurfacing as part of the overall asphalt program, and also removal and replacement of the planter that's been in front of Lincoln Square from time immemorial. Oh, you've got pictures, too. So we do have pictures of the work that was just completed.
The picture that I brought is what we hope to emulate because it actually has.
Well, actually, we have an actual picture.
Oh, okay.
Craig sent it around late this afternoon. So I'm going to just share this with you, the before and after. So our, our commitment as part of the development agreement with the purchasers of the Landmark Hotel has now been completed, except for the landscaping. That'll be put in later. So thanks to Public Works for completing this very efficiently and cost-effectively. Folding this project into the overall larger asphalt project allowed us to get it done faster and cheaper than if we had done it as a standalone project. Any other questions? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Hersi.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor Marlin.
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item, Dean.
Thank you. Ordinance number 2019-08-049, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section Twenty-three dash one-eighty-three of the Urbana Local Traffic Code prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets, Green Street between Lincoln Avenue and Race Street, Public
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any further questions or discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown.
Yes.
Hazen.
Yes.
Hersi.
Yes.
Jacobson.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
That motion passes. Any reports, reports of, thank you, Dean, any reports of special Reports of officers. I did have a couple of updates I wanted to provide. First of all, I wanted to let the council and the public know that our, status of our Public Works, search for a Public Works Director, we've had an excellent response to reopening the search. I'm very pleased with the quality of the applications. The Search Committee will meet this week, tomorrow actually, and review our process, and then we'll start reviewing applications in mid-September. Search Committee is composed of representatives from the Executive Department and Public Works Department, and as we go through the process, there will be ample opportunity for other employees and the public to hear from the candidates. But we're really, really pleased with the response. And secondly, I wanted to let folks know that this morning, City Administrator Carol Mitten sent a draft memorandum of understanding to the Independent Media Center, and this was as follow-up to our discussion in July, outlining proposed obligations on the part of the city and the Independent Media Center. So we're, sent it to them for their comment, review, and feedback. We also provided a copy to Councilmember Miller because he's expressed an interest in helping review in this process. So we'll look for comments and feedbacks. Still to be done is on the city side, we need to revise our public events ordinance, and on the IMC side, we're, they still need to provide us with the, we're calling them house rules. I'm not sure what term they'll be using, but basically house rules for, we're guiding the groups over there. So I'm pleased with the progress, and we're, we've taken a step forward. Okay, under new business, ordinance number 2019-09-052, which is an ordinance approving a major variance at 303 West University, ZBA case 2019 MAJ-07. And Marcus Ricci is here to present this case.
Good evening. Andy Rousseau is here from the Park District if there are any questions when I'm done with my presentation. So we have before us a request by the Urbana Park District for a major variance to expand the existing parking lot up to sixteen feet into the required front yard at Liel Park at 303 West University Avenue in the CRE District. The park is located south of University Avenue between Race Street and the former Broad Alley between the new Culvers Restaurant and the Lincoln Lodge Motel. The existing parking lot currently encroaches approximately fifteen feet into the required front yard. Expanding the parking lot to the east in the proposed fashion would extend the existing encroachment eastward approximately fifty feet. In 1987, the relocation and renovation of the Greek Revival Cottage created the need for a parking lot. The district applied for and obtained a building permit from the city to build this parking lot and other facilities. Until recently, district staff parked on the property to the east where the new Culvers Restaurant has been built. The district now has to relocate that staff parking capacity elsewhere. They believe that the best option is to expand the existing visitor parking lot on their own property. The proposed lot expansion would be closer to the district offices than their current off-site parking, which is being leased at the parking lot to the south of the park down here along the railroad tracks, and access would be better lit to address safety concerns and would be more easily maintained for snow removal and the like. You can see here the 1987 site plan with the twelve-space lot showing it was approximately fifteen feet from the right-of-way. A little close-up showing how they avoided this mature tree there along the University Avenue side. This is an excerpt of the current site plan showing that existing parking lot. We've got mature trees to the south of the existing parking lot, and mature trees, and some younger trees to the east. What they are proposing to do is to build an additional eight parking spaces here, removing two trees, avoiding this mature tree here, and then they'll be relocating the landscaping bed here, south to the gazebo, and relocating the Liel Park sign area. Then we've got a little close-up showing that on the west side, where the existing parking lot is, we've got a 15.8-foot encroachment, and then as they tried to reduce that encroachment as much as possible, it drops down to 13.2 feet on the east end, but it is still a significant encroachment into that 25-foot required front yard. The applicant, and then we have the zoning here of the property, we've got B-three general business to the west and north, and B-four where the Culvers Restaurant is, a little smidge of B-three zoning here still, and then the rest is B-four to the east and south. The applicant stated that the proposed parking lot expansion would consolidate these three parking areas into a single lot on district property and would compensate for the recent loss of the leased parking area on the Culvers site. Other than the requested yard variance, the proposed parking lot would comply with all other city regulations. The staff review of the applicant's request against the six criteria listed in the zoning ordinance is provided there in the staff report, and this request appears to meet all of those criteria. The staff findings are also summarized in the staff report, and we focused on the findings that the district recently lost its off-site parking area when it was sold and developed, and that the proposed variance minimizes the loss of mature trees and quiet areas in the park while optimizing the consolidation of existing parking capacity onto district Okay, the Urbana City Council has the following options for this case. Approve the variance based on findings, sorry. In this memo, approve the variance with certain terms and conditions, and if so, articulate those terms and conditions, or deny the variance request, and if so, articulate findings supporting the denial. At the August 21 ZBA meeting, the ZBA voted 6-0 to forward the request with a recommendation to approve the request with one condition. City staff likewise recommends approval with the same condition, which is that the proposed parking lot expansion shall generally conform to the attached site plan and specifications. That is the end of the staff report. I'm here for questions. Also, Mr. Rousseau is here from the district to answer any questions you might have.
Any technical questions? Mary Alice.
So if I'm reading this correctly, part of the background was that when this was initially built, the initial parking lot, that there was no variance given at that time, even though it encroached on the front yard setback. Is that correct?
We could find no record of any correspondence or request for variance, and the requirement at that time was a 25-foot yard setback.
So in, in one sense, this is not only allowing for the expansion, but also trying to make the books right, so to speak?
We did not request that the existing parking lot be considered to be legally conforming. That would have been.
Okay, all right, that was my confusion. Thank you. Thank you for that.
Sure.
And then, so if I look at, would you mind pulling up the, the drawing of the proposed parking lot? So right here, the existing concrete parking lot is fifteen, almost sixteen feet encroaching, so it's about nine feet away from the property line, correct?
That sounds right, yes.
Okay. And it looks to me like this is set back a little bit further, this proposed new parking lot.
Correct.
But we are still, the proposal is to give a 16-foot variance on that 25-foot setback.
Because the west end of the proposed parking lot is probably about fifteen feet encroaching, so we were just, you know, adding in a little buffer in case it gets out there and we find that we're two inches off in the survey or something.
And then my final question is on page two, under the discussion, and you had actually mentioned this in your presentation, it says at the bottom, "The proposed parking lot expansion would extend the existing encroachment into the required front yard eastward by approximately fifty feet." Does that mean that, the 50-foot kind of threw me there, does that mean that it's, the parking lot is 50 feet?
The, the extension, it's going to extend the parking lot eastward 50 feet into the park.
Okay, because at least the way I read it is that it was the front yard setback would be 50 feet.
No, no, it's, yes. I could have probably taken a paragraph to try and describe that sentence.
Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Any other questions? Bill.
I guess as far as the needed for the lot goes, has the district tried renting replacement spaces, like at Silver Creek Lot or anything like that?
I will leave that for.
Yeah, we're currently leasing.
Can you speak into the microphone?
Yeah, sorry. We're currently leasing spaces right now at the gravel lot south of the park. And we, so there's less lighting and a further distance for staff members to travel, and there's been some concerns of safety early in the morning or later in the evening going through that, so we're. in the evening going through that, so we're wanting to own our own parking lot and consolidate it with the current paved lot.
How many staff employees work at the office there?
There's seven full-time, and then we usually have one or two part-time and interns.
And for the spaces that they don't use, well, even for the spaces that they use, I guess, are they reserved spaces? Can people, the public park there to use the park, or is there?
The paved?
Yeah.
Currently? It's public.
It's public.
So it'd be used for full-time staff that are currently residing in the building, anyone that's visiting for meetings with those staff. Other district personnel will have to go to that, that facility pretty frequently, and then it's also open parking for any park user.
And then, I know sometimes you have trouble at Crystal Lake Park with people, they're going to the hospital parking there. Do you ever have trouble like that there? Is there some way you regulate that?
Yes, we do usually have problems in Crystal Lake Park. I don't think we've actually had many issues with people parking at Liel and walking to Carl. How we deal with it at Crystal Lake Park is posting yard signs, basically, and pretty much just trying to ask people to not park there for hospital use, and believe it or not, it's fairly successful.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Okay, is there a motion for approval?
I will make a motion for approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dean, seconded by Jared. Any further discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmembers Brown?
Yes.
Hazen?
Yes.
Hersi?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
That motion passes. Last item on the agenda are several appointments I'd submit for your approval. First is to the Historic Preservation Commission, and these are all terms ending June 30th, 2022. Renee Pollock. Ms. Pollock served as the Chief Deputy Assessor for Cunningham Township from 1978 to 2010. She brings a passion for history and the preservation of older buildings located in our community. She's committed to helping grow a multi-tiered approach to planning and community development. And for the Arts and Culture, well, let's just take that one individually. Is there a motion for approval there?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Jared, seconded by Mary Alice. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Congratulations, Renee. For the Urbana Arts and Culture Commission, Frank Morica. Mr. Morica is a retired special ed teacher who worked in the Urbana School District for 32 years. He's a published writer, and he looks to further encourage the arts in our community, particularly in the area of writing. Gonzala Panilla is a current graduate student and teaching assistant at the U of I at Urbana-Champaign School of Art and Design. He's an artist and a member of our international community. He's dedicated to promoting cultural activities that are engaging and enriching to all. And Ms. Angela Williams is an academic professional and educator at the U of I at Urbana-Champaign. She develops and teaches courses related to the Middle East. She's especially interested in working with marginalized female artists to have their work represented more in public spaces, and helping bridge the gap between campus and the City of Urbana. Is there a motion for approval?
I'm moved to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Sharice, seconded by Bill. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Before we adjourn, I did, I did forget to thank our Finance Director, Elizabeth Hannan, Carol Mitten, City Administrator, and all the staff, plus the owners and manager of NewMed for all the work that was done to prepare us to take this vote on the cannabis tax, and we look forward to a productive relationship. Thank you very much. With no further business before this council, this meeting is adjourned.